Everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. He isn't. I was waiting to see. Okay. Give us one second.
No, I'm gonna start it off.
This is awkward.
This is just awkward. It's like a surprise port.
Do you know how to get back in?
Let me just. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance. I want to call to order the regular public meeting of the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, January 23, 2024. The Board of Supervisors met in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of real estate and litigation. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our Environmental Advisory Council, who is on a strict timeframe. Can call up Maureen, and she is going to do a presentation on our Going Green Awards.
Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Maureen Nun. I'm the chairman of the Going Green Award Committee for Lower Gwinnett. And tonight, I have the honor and privilege of presenting for the Environmental Advisory Council and the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors, the Going Green Award. But before I get into that, what I'd like to say, for all those people who are unfamiliar with this award, I'd like to tell you what it is and what it is not. The Going Green Award is not is not trying to find the most sustainable person, organization, or corporation within Lower Gwinnett. That was far beyond what our committee could do. What it is about is about celebrating the sustainable actions that are already occurring within Lower Gwinnett. And with that, I'd like to, next slide, call up Mary Pellegrino. Mary Pellegrino is the Going Green Award Youth Award winner. And she won the award for her circular sustainability project. Next slide. Basically, what Mary did was she collected food scraps and composted them on her property and with her lawn waste, used the compost in her various gardens, one of which was a vegetable garden, grew vegetables, which returned to the table, generated scraps, and thus created a circular sustainable project. In addition to her vegetable gardens, she also had rain gardens for stormwater management and also a pollinator garden. All of her gardens used Pennsylvania native plants, which we are trying to promote throughout our community. Finally, you may not be aware, but the Environmental Protection Agency is trying to protect bees, which are pollinators. And many of the bees are susceptible to pesticides. What Mary has is two beehives on site and thus is our Youth Award winner for the Going Green Committee. Thank you. Next slide. Our next award winner is Hearth Builders. Can Hearth Builders, please, come on down? Hearth Builders is being honored for their new headquarters. What they did was consolidate multiple sites by an older building within Lower Gwinnett, right up here on Bethlehem Pike, and renovate it. But they renovated it with sustainability in mind. If you look at this photo, you can see the solar panels right there. Because what they're doing is actually using their new headquarters to educate their customers who are interested in sustainable options. They use the headquarters. The customers can come out. What you see right next to it is an indoor-outdoor space, so customers can get up close and personal and actually see these solar panels right there. In addition, they have multiple environmentally friendly options that are used in the headquarters, including lights that go on and on and off when all the rooms are being used, or programmable thermostats, and it goes on and on and on. In addition, they have not one, but two EV chargers that they've installed, and they're converting their fleets to EV trucks. So with that, please join me in honoring Hearth Builders for their honorable mention in the Going Green Award. Next slide. Finally, our Going Green Award overall winner. Please, Gwinnett Friends School, Gwinnett Friends Monthly, please come on down. Gwinnett Friends School and Gwinnett Friends Monthly are being honored today for their comprehensive plan, land use plan. This is a five-year plan in which they're going to renovate their entire site. They went through and did all sorts of things that we're trying to promote, like the removal of invasive species, the planting of native plants. They put in rain gardens. They obviously correctly are handling the expanded wooded wetlands and using natural buffers between them and the roads. They used pallets in order to build play equipment. They also look beyond this entire program, and they're using EV lawn mowers and various equipment, and they're going to be using their leaves in order to mulch all their various gardens. They hired an expert, Paige Menton, and she guided them through the entire process. She's also was a Going Green Award nominee, and her expertise is to do, trying to do this, and she has a a nonprofit Journey Works program in which she'll come out and she'll help our residents to do all that. But what really put them over the top for us is their communication. Throughout the entire process, they communicated with the entire congregation as this status. They were able to volunteer and get hands-on opportunities to see how they could do this, which should empower them to be able to do that on their own property. In addition, they incorporated all of these sustainable practices and the various aspects of this design in their school to train our next generation of environmentalists. So please join me in recognizing the 2023 Going Green Award winners, Gwinnett Mercy Monthly and Gwinnett Mercy School.
Thank you so much to our Environmental Advisory Council, and congratulations to the Going Green Awardees. With that, we have some special activities for the evening involving our police force. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Kenny.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have a few things to get through here, so we're going to start it off pretty quickly, and then before we call the officer forward, we're pleased that the Honorable Judge Zaffarano is back with us. We didn't think we'd have the privilege of having her again, but we're thrilled she's here. She's here to swear in a couple, a new officer and a promotional ceremony. So with that, I'd like to call New Officer Greg Rosman forward. I believe you're here with your wife and mother. They want to come forward too? Come on up. And I'll turn it over to Judge Zaffarano for swearing in. Greg comes to us from Philadelphia Police Department. He spent four and a half years with Philadelphia. As you know, you've interviewed him. Rigorous testing that we go through to become police officer Montgomery County. Written tests, oral exams, psychologics, physicals, polygraphs, more interviews, more interviews, more interviews, background investigations. If you need to know anything about him, we'll be happy to fill you in later. I know all the secrets. So with that, we'll turn it over to Judge Zaffarano for our first swearing in. We always have our departmental Bible here. I talked about before.
Every officer here tonight has used this. It's from back in the 1970s. So it's been around quite a while, and one thing we haven't lost in all the moves.
Your left hand on the Bible and reach your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the ordinances and regulations of Lower Gwinnett Township. I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law without consideration to a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, ancestry, handicap or disability, and that I will discharge the duties of officer of Lower Gwinnett Township with fidelity. Congratulations.
Before we go on to the next one, I think it's pretty important that I recognize what brought Greg here tonight, and that's this board and our manager, Mimi. We're 22 officers right now, which is amazing for our department. Everybody's struggling to hire. Everybody's struggling to find good people. And this board has been, go get them from the very beginning. Don't wait. Go get good people and bring them here. And I really want to thank you. The community thanks you. They know you're working hard for them. And Mimi, you've been such a supporter in bringing that message forward, how important public safety is. So thank you very much for that. Next, we have a promotional ceremony for somebody that I think I know a lot of people. And I think I'm pretty popular. He would give me a run for my money. I had to dress up tonight because I knew the firemen would be here, and I didn't want them to outdress me. But this guy, Officer Henry, who is known as Towne, is a Whistaken High School graduate. So he's from the community. He came to our police department originally as a dispatcher in the 90s. We were fortunate to get him to sign on with us. Come on up here a little bit while I'm talking about you. He started with our department in 2001. About a year ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, when I met with the board, and there was a lot of questions about what do we do as a department? And this board wanted more. They wanted more community response. They wanted more community involvement. And you did that by allowing us to hire some people. We turned that over to Towne, our Community Response Unit. I want to tell you that in the last year, there are two groups of people that, as police officers, we're worried about. We're worried about real young people, and we're worried about older people. There are vulnerable groups that need protection. So in the last six months, nine months, this guy has spent a week at a summer camp with 12-year-olds. Camp Cadet is run by the Pennsylvania State Police, and it's a role model. It's a leadership program. But the kids spend all night there, and so do the cops. And his son Ryan is here, who's not yet 12. He's still smiling. When you're 12 years old, I don't know if he's going to want to keep going back to this camp. But one thing Towne said when he came back was, "I can't wait to go back next year." It's just been an incredible devotion of time and effort, and it takes a special person to want to do something like that. And kids see right through you if you're not being sincere. Secondly, our older population. This hit me yesterday. Our crime stats for fraud are down from 2022 to 2023. We had 89 reported fraud cases in 2022. We had 56 in 2023. This man has been to every retirement home, community event, promoting awareness of scams that are out there, and we can't do it enough. We could do it monthly, and he's doing that. We're very good, police officers, at responding to 911 calls. We're very bad at planning ahead and trying to do things forward, not forward-thinking, but being out there, hey, let's go do this event next month. We joke about that all the time, that ask a cop to do something a month, and now he complains. I almost said something. Give him a 911 call, and he's right there. No problem. Towne's doing it. He's out in the community. Our Fall Fest, every community event, all our 5Ks, all our charitable events, Towne is making a presence and bringing other officers with him, saying, hey, we need to be here. We need to do this. We need to do that. And it's just going to make such a huge difference to this community. It's just so deserving that he's here tonight and going to be promoted to the rank of sergeant. So we're thrilled. I'm happy for him, and I wish him the very best. We're going to do the same thing again. We have another long swearing in again.
Raise your other hand, and please repeat after me. I, please state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the ordinances and regulations of Lower Gwinnett Township. I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law without consideration to a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, ancestry, handicap or disability, and that I will discharge the duties of Sergeant of Lower Gwinnett Township with fidelity. Congratulations.
Apparently I have to say something for a minute. Well, the chief said a lot that happened this past year, but I couldn't. We talked about the scams. I couldn't do it without the two detectives because they spoke a lot. I just got them there. Thank you, guys, Brendan and Mike. I don't even know what to say. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Thank you, lieutenant. Thank you, board, for allowing this to happen. I've been around here a long time. I actually got my first, "Do you want to come?" in 1993 in the pool in Schoolhouse Road. The chief Hancock way back when, and I said no. Because I was young and dumb. But I made it here now, and I couldn't do it without a lot of people in this room. There's a lot of people that weren't here. I started in the community doing stuff in 1987 when I joined the Whistaken Fire Company. I'm still a member now. I've been almost 38 years. Went through all the ranks up to Assistant Chief until I met my wife and moved to Westchester, and I still do it down there at Goshen Fire Company, so I'm not out of it. And my days off, I still drive here whenever we get a call. Somebody else I had to thank besides my wife, but Judge Zaffarano, she just retired at the end of the year. I called her up and asked her if she can do this for me. She's a family friend, goes way back. And there's some others out there, Judge Tressler, Judge Tilson, there's a whole lot of them that I grew up with. I would like to thank you all for everything you do. My wife and my son. I don't know what to say. Thank you for being there. The shifts have been difficult. Now it's getting better where I'm at. Thank you for being there. Don't worry, guys. Thank you for being there, and I love you guys for sticking up for everything I'm doing right now. And I thank everybody else for coming out here, too. And my cookie monster.
We're going to make y'all stay for a few more minutes. Back in June, if the board remembers, we did commendations for good police work, and it was such an overwhelming response that we're going to try and do it twice a year. So we're going to try and pick June and January. So I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant. Sergeant, wow. Hey, maybe the next time he'll dress up. Lieutenant Gargan, we formed a committee. We don't want this to be watered down to where you just do regular jobs, and it's voted on by the members of the department. It's a committee of six officers. They meet. I went and didn't participate. I left when they started talking about it. But this is, anybody can submit the name of another officer. I meant to bring that up to the fire company that we did this yesterday when we had our meeting. Anybody can submit the name of good police work, of good job that somebody does, and the committee looks at it, and we set up a criteria, and these are some awards that we're going to hand out tonight.
Thank you, chief, except for that sergeant thing. I'll get by. Thank you to the board once again for giving us the form to do this. Thank you to the Commendation Review Board. Appreciate you guys taking it easy on the beer and wings this time. A little bit more sensible. We have three commendations that we'd like to give out. I would ask Officer Tim Evar to come up. Officer Evar was nominated by one of his fellow officers, Officer Fowler, and he's going to receive a Class Four Award for a job that he did in October. And I'll just give you some brief details. On October 18th at about 8:36, Porsha Police were dispatched to the AMC Movie Theater for a report of an overdose. And just to give you some context, most cops don't enjoy listening to the radio. It's 12 hours of extreme focus and attention. As the years go on, you listen to less and less as far as surrounding jurisdiction. Tim flies against that grain. As a fireman and EMT, Tim listens to every possible first responder channel, every ambulance, every fire company, every police department that's anywhere close to us, Tim has going. And because he does that, he had heard that Porsha had that overdose call. He wasn't asked to come. He monitored it. Because he was monitoring it, he also realized that Porsha was tied up on other calls and that there was a chance that nobody was going to be able to respond in time. Tim took it upon himself to go there to assist. When he got there, he realized he was the only cop that was there at the time. Somebody in the parking lot was doing CPR on somebody who had overdosed. Officer Evar had realized that they had given the person Narcan, but they did it inappropriately. They missed it, and it hadn't taken effect yet. He helped to assist in administering a dose of Narcan, and the subject came out of it. In a moment where somebody's overdosing and we're in cardiac arrest, seconds matter, minutes matter. And without Tim's quick response and his proactive monitoring, everything that's going on around him, this subject probably would have passed. So he was nominated. We all agreed unanimously. This was an easy one. Tim deserved a commendation for what he did. Congratulations. The rest of the officers asked that, after your shift, if you could turn off some of those channels. A little bit easier for them to get through. Next, I would ask that Squad Two, these are unit commendations, the two that are last, and these are special to us because it involves an entire squad working together to accomplish a goal. So I would ask Squad Two of last year, Sergeant Westernman, Officer Tom Henry, Officer John Dobson, and Officer Garrett Vale to come up. Okay, it's just you guys. This was another great call, and it actually ironically happened on the same day as Tim's save. October 18th was a busy day in Lower Gwinnett. But on October 18th at about 4:18, these officers, along with our two other officers, were dispatched for a suicidal subject that was located in a wooded area by Route 309. The subject is self-identified on the phone as being mentally ill and wanting to end his life by throwing himself in front of traffic on Route 309. Officer Henry located the subject in the woods and immediately began talking to him. Again, for a little context, anybody that's had a conversation with Officer Henry, it can go on a really, really long time. If a story would take 30 seconds, 30 minutes later, Tommy's still talking to you. But because he engaged this man in conversation and was using deescalating language, the guy kept talking to Tom. While he did this, Officer Dobson positioned himself between traffic and the subject. So in case things had gone south, or the guy got bored of listening to Tom go on and on, he would be in a position to stop him. Officer Vale checked to make sure that the guy didn't have any weapons on him and was looking at his possessions. And Sergeant Westernman started contacting emergency services, mental health crisis units that could come out and assist us. They managed to talk the guy into an ambulance. They responded to a facility where he could get the treatment that he so desired. While at the facility, the man started getting a little bit riled up, and our officers had had such a bond with him at this time, they were able to talk him down at the hospital to get him to agree to treatment and get the services that he so desperately needed. These calls with emotionally disturbed people can go really bad really fast, and you guys did an absolutely amazing job using your skills, using de-escalation, using Tom's gift for laquacious speaking to have a really happy resolve. All four of you are to be commended for your actions. John, if you could head back up again?
Okay.
Is Garrett back there? Okay. Also, a unit two commendation, but this time it was just Officer Dobson and it was Officer Vale. And this one, they're all very special, like my kids. I love them all the same, but we all, you know, we maybe a little bit more. This is probably my favorite of all of them on the job that they did. On November 25th at 11:30 PM, Officer Dobson and Vale were dispatched to a local nursing home for a missing subject. The resident had checked herself out to go for a walk at noon, left on foot, and hadn't returned. So we're talking about about a 12-hour period here. The weather outside had dipped below freezing. The subject wasn't dressed for the weather, and they had no idea where she was. The subject was also suffering from dementia and some other ailments that made it even more scary for the officers. Officer Dobson stayed on scene, tried to get as much information as she could. She didn't have a car. She didn't have a phone. We didn't know where. Officer Vale somehow spotted a shadow in the middle of Veterans Park. And if anybody's been in Veterans Park, to see what's going on in the middle of that from the street is almost impossible. But Eagle Eye Vale managed to spot a shadow, went in and found a woman whose core temperature had dropped 20 degrees, was incoherent, and was beginning to hallucinate a little bit. They immediately rendered aid. They gave her an emergency blanket. Officer Vale talked to her. He sat next to her to share body warmth until the EMS could get there. He sat next to her to share body warmth until the EMS could get there. When the EMTs did get there, she began hallucinating and fighting a little bit with him. They had created such a bond with her, they were able to talk her into the ambulance and then follow her down to the hospital to make sure she got the treatment that she needed. I interviewed the woman the next day at the ICU to make sure that she hadn't been victimized while she was going through what she was going through. She couldn't remember almost anything, but the one thing that she remembered was the care and the treatment she got from Officer Vale and Officer Dobson. Having watched the body cam and seeing how they treated this person, it totally lived up to the chief's mission of protecting the very old, protecting the very young. I've never been prouder to be a cop than watching those guys on body cam doing what they did for the citizen. Nice job. You're both to be commended.
Thank you. Thanks.
And just to wrap it up, really thank you to all you guys for coming out. I'm sure County appreciates it, but you know, how many free nights do you get and you're here? And we kept you here a long time, so appreciate it. Thank you to the board, and we're done.
Thank you.
Can we keep them all staying? Did I have to stay?
They can go. Want to congratulate Officer Rosman as well as Sergeant Henry.
Thanks a lot.
I love that. Thank you. Thank you.
There's not many good parts of this job. This is a good part of this job.
Thank you for coming back, Judge Zaffarano.
No, there is. There used to be a site with pictures. I don't know what happened to that.
I know this is new.
Let me know when you need me.
Yes, yeah, I saw Sweeney in the. You all right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Want to open it up for public comments? This is open to citizen comments, concerns, or questions for items not on the agenda. If you have any comments, if anyone online or anyone in person, if you have a comment, by all means, sir, you can come on up. There's the microphone. Just state your name and your address, sir. You just wait one second, they're getting ready to leave.
Mark Schaefer, twenty-three Brookline Court, just want to compliment Public Works.
I don't think we can hear you. Is that microphone?
Yeah, sure, I can hear. Yeah.
Give us one second till they close the door.
Just want to compliment Public Works for the spot repair of the roads they did. The change in Penland Blue Bell Pike at the intersection with Dager is night and day. Just a little kudo, they found the right spot to do work, and it really made a difference. That's all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schaefer. So kind of you.
We'll make sure that Fred and our. Fred, you didn't have to tell anyone, Fred. Gosh. Well, we tried. Does anyone else have any public comments? Anyone online?
Mr. Wentz is in the audience, and he had.
You have a comment, Mr. Wentz?
I think this is anyone.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is your time. Come on up. Grab the, you see the microphone? Okay. You just have to say your name and your address. You got to pick, if you could pick up the microphone, because the people online won't be able to. Pick up the microphone so the people online can hear you. No, please hold it close, hold it close.
I don't think it's on.
Is it not on?
Thank you. All right, does that work?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Fred Wentz. At nine oh four Gypsy Hill Road. And I'm requesting relief from having to file a conditional use application for the property of five thirty-seven Penland Pike. It's a property I recently purchased. My intention is to divide the property, leaving the house with over an acre, and adding the remainder of the lot to my backyard. The township zoning officer said, as I said, that I am required to file a conditional use application because the property is non-conforming due to one hundred and fifty-foot setback requirement along Penland Pike. Other than the setback provision, the property meets all of the A residential zoning requirements. Ten years ago, I purchased five forty-one Penland Pike and submitted a minor subdivision plan which was approved without a conditional use application. The five thirty-seven property is slightly larger than the five forty-one. Since this is such a minor modification and does not change any A residential zoning requirements, I am requesting that the township permit me to follow the same procedures as I did in two thousand thirteen. And I have a plan showing, the dotted line shows the existing boundary and the solid red line, the proposed revision. That's it. I'm going to give one to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah.
So, Mr. Wentz?
Yeah.
This is something our zoning officer would have the authority to kind of instruct you on. I do believe that you would need a conditional use variance, but I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor to give you a more fact-based legal opinion.
Yes, Mr. Wentz, good evening. The requirement for a conditional use is contained in the zoning ordinance. And this board doesn't have the authority to waive a requirement in the zoning ordinance. A waiver or a variance, as it's called, from a zoning requirement would have to be granted by the zoning hearing board. This board could not do that. This board would, however, act on your conditional use application, and it sounds like you would have a good case for the grant of a conditional use. But this board doesn't have the authority to waive that requirement.
Does that mean that I have to go to the zoning board to ask them?
You could possibly go to the zoning hearing board and request a variance from that requirement, but you'd have to meet the standards for the grant of a variance imposed by state law, which may be difficult to do under the circumstances. But you're welcome to try.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Wentz, you could also, going, I'm sorry, I'm right here. My name is Mimi Gleason, I'm the township manager. Going through the conditional use process isn't going to be that much more involved than going through the zoning hearing board process. You may want to talk to Jamie about that. You have to go through that application process for the conditional use. So you may not save time or money doing that. And you're probably going to have to do the conditional use process anyway. So that may be the simplest way for you, if you could just follow Jamie's guidance for the conditional use process, just something to think about.
Any additional public comments? Seeing none. I'm going to move on to the authorization to initiate the ordinance amendment process, including the authorization to advertise a legal notice for amendment to a temporary sign regulation in the zoning ordinance in the township code. We have a memo included in our board packet. It was from our assistant township manager. And it discusses the proposed amendment to Chapter twelve ninety-two and signs with Lower Guinnett zoning ordinance as relates to temporary signs, excluding real estate signs. And the draft version was reviewed and discussed at the January Building and Zoning Subcommittee. The recommendation is to authorize staff to initiate the ordinance amendment process to include authorization to advertise the legal notice for the amendment to the temporary sign regulations in the township code. Are there any questions from the board?
I don't have a question, but I have a couple of comments to the ordinance that I just want to put on the record, I guess. In Section One, the definition of temporary sign, the portable sign, the second sentence is by way of example only, correct?
Yes.
And then this would not have no impact on real estate signs, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions from the board?
I have a question. So I'm a little bit confused about what a temporary sign is. Is, does that include if I, for example, wanted to put up a political sign or, you know, just a philosophical sign in my front yard? It could only stay there for two weeks?
No, it doesn't apply to private property. The residential private property. It applies to predominantly commercial property and property on which there are commercial uses.
So.
Would not apply to.
So homeowners don't have to worry about this.
I'm sorry?
Homeowners don't have to worry about this ordinance.
Correct.
Okay, very good. That's all.
Any additional questions, comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Anybody? So this is the authorization for staff to initiate the ordinance amendment process, including the authorization to advertise the legal notice for the amendment to the temporary sign regulations in the township code. Like to make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear you, Tessie. You, I? Were you abstaining? I couldn't hear you.
I said aye.
Okay. Motion carries, thank you. Next up is. Hold on. My packet's out of order. Yeah, but that's not how it is. Okay. I'm sorry. Next up is to authorize the township manager to sign an agreement with Lee Berry of Keller Williams Real Estate for the historic real estate marketing services for the Ingerstall State as revised to the satisfaction of the township solicitor.
Really?
Is that not on the agenda?
It is, it's number four of them.
I skipped a couple things?
Yeah.
So the packet is not correct? Yeah, yeah, but this is, the packet is, I'm going in order of packet.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I see, but there wouldn't be anything in that packet, I don't think. One, two.
I got you, I'm sorry, I followed the packet. My, okay. First up is the appointment of Francis McKenzie to the Lower Guinnett Township Parks and Rec Board to fill an unexpired term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. The recommendation by the park liaison, the park and rec liaison, was to appoint Francis McKenzie. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Any from the public? Like to make a motion to appoint Francis McKenzie to the Lower Guinnett Township Park and Rec Board to fill an unexpired term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is to reappoint Mary Claghorn to a three-year term as a Lower Guinnett Township representative to the Wissick and Valley Public Library Board. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mary Claghorn to a three-year term as a Lower Guinnett Township representative on the Wissick and Valley Public Library Board. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Here we go. Now we're back. Next up is the authorization to advertise an amendment creating a new Chapter eight-five-eight entitled the Responsible Contract Requirements in the Township Code, included in our board packet, and I think it was sent separately from our board packet, actually, is the language for the actual ordinance. I can turn it over to our solicitor to give us a brief overview.
When the township goes out to bid for public works projects, we're bound to accept the lowest responsible bid. Unfortunately, there's no definition really of what responsible means. A responsible contractor ordinance of the type that's proposed here would clearly define policies and clarify the requirements for a contractor to be considered responsible. Also, it would have the benefit of making sure that the taxpayer money used for public works projects is spent appropriately, hopefully eliminating cost overruns and change orders by having quality contractors work on projects. The idea would also be to make sure there are requirements involving appropriate training standards for those performing work in the township, so that we know that contractors have been appropriately trained and are doing their work in the most responsible manner possible. It has many other benefits as well. But generally speaking, this is something that would be in the best interests of the township going forward to make sure that we do have the most responsible individuals spending the taxpayers' money on public works projects.
Thank you, Neil. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. So, thank you for that, Neil. Why are we setting the threshold of two hundred and fifty thousand and not lower than that? Is there a reason that we can't lower that amount?
I think the concern is, and I won't speak for the manager, she can handle this better than I can. But I think the concern is, as you get into the lower dollar amounts, it becomes more difficult to find bidders for those types of contracts.
So the bidding process is expensive and it's very involved. So it's easier with these bigger projects. It's just worth more contractors' while to go through that process. As you get into smaller projects, it's, it can be hard to get people to want to bid for those projects anyway, just to go through the burden of the bidding process. So to have these additional requirements could potentially just tie our hands a little bit and make it harder to find contractors. So that was the rationale. And when we looked at the other municipalities, two hundred and fifty thousand seemed to be somewhat of a midpoint where they were setting their minimum.
And so your professional opinion is two fifty is a good point at which the size of the contractor's bidding could handle that amount?
It is a little bit of a guess, I'll be honest, but yes, it feels right. You're starting to get into the more sizable capital projects at that level.
Now, my only concern is that we wouldn't have the same protections then theoretically if we went to bid out a project for two hundred thousand. Is there any likelihood of that happening?
You know, it's.
I mean, that's what we're doing now, though.
Right.
We don't have that protection right now.
Okay, but if we're going to put this in effect, maybe we need to consider broadening it a little bit? My other question is that in the wording, the suggestion that if we don't find someone who's appropriately qualified to make the bid, we may have to drop some of the requirements, but there's no specification about what that means. Do we drop the whole set of requirements or just one? Or what is the path forward for that?
I think that's going to be determined on an ad hoc basis, depending on what the contract is, what types of bids are received. There'll have to be a qualitative judgment made as to what requirements can or should be dropped.
So there's no legal implication if we do this ad hoc?
Well, we're doing it, we're doing it now. Well, we're doing it, we're doing it now.
Well, I, I know, but we're talking about the future. When we, if we vote on this bill and pass it, so I'm trying to understand the implications for.
I don't think there would be any legal implications under those circumstances. Because again, we're looking for the lowest responsible bid, so we'd have to determine if in fact the bidder is responsible irrespective of the requirements in the ordinance.
Essentially, where this is most likely to come up is we, we've gone out to bid, you didn't get any bidders. Usually, when, when that happens now, we, we try to, you know, figure out why that was. Do we have to change our specifications, our timeline, maybe something to make this more attractive to get bidders? So you, you do it again, you still haven't gotten bidders. Because that's what in the ordinance says, after you've gone to bid twice, that then you could relax some of the requirements. So that might be where what we're hearing is for this kind of project, there just aren't many contractors who can meet all of these requirements, who do that work. So, and that's why it would be on a case-by-case basis. It may, it may be, you know, there's one particular requirement in here that if we don't apply, if we waive that in that case, then we could get bidders and move forward. But it, it would depend on the facts of the particular situation.
Okay, that's all.
Anyone else?
I just had a couple proposed changes to the draft that was circulated that I, if we are going to advertise, that I would like to see in the advertised version. The first one in substance is essentially a provision I've seen in other responsible contractor ordinances where the firm that issues the bid doesn't just guarantee or certify that they have, you know, an apprenticeship or training program that's approved by the Department of Labor, but that also at least 70%, so like more, a little more than the majority of the laborers on the job, the contractor certifies will have gone through those trainings to, you know, provide that additional protection that not only does the firm offer those trainings, but that the folks that are actually working on the job have gone through those trainings. So I would propose that that language be added. And then just a, a tweak, which I think may have just been an inadvertent, some inadvertent language, but under 858.03A, it reads as a condition of performing construction, plumbing, heating, ventilation, and electrical work. I think we should remove those limitations so that it simply says that as a condition of performing any public works projects subject to this ordinance, the, the contractor needs to provide the contract responsibility certification, just to be consistent throughout the ordinance. Those are just two substant- I'm sorry, it's 858.03A. To make it clear that it applies to all of the projects subject to the ordinance. That's it for my comments, unless there's other comments, I can make a motion.
I have a question. Is there a, is there a mechanism to address the monetary threshold to take into account things like inflation, or would we have to do that on a, I don't want to say year-by-year basis, but whenever we feel that the threshold doesn't make sense anymore, we would change it? Or I, I'm just not sure how these things work in other municipalities or how it would work in practice.
That was going to be my, my question too, kind of more along the lines of if $250,000, would you see other municipalities in the past years, like back to 2020? Past that, I think 200, $250,000 now might be 350,000. But do we take into account inflation or is there any provision?
It's based on the value of the contract. If you consider the threshold too low at some point, I would recommend just amending the ordinance to increase it.
So no self-trigger?
No.
Increase with like LIBOR or some, or some inferior object. I'm just, I'm usually, I'm just throwing out an objective standard. Whatever, I mean, just pick your number.
Because I mean, that fluctuates with.
Pick your standard.
Could we, so adding that would be outside of the realm of what would be considered normal?
We'd have to pick an index.
Could we use the same language that's in the state bidding law, that that's tied to?
CPI.
Yeah, there's consumer price index.
Yeah, we'd have to pick the right CPI, because there are several different versions.
And construction can be different.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
I think, actually, I think it makes sense to allow us to be nimble, to change it if reasons beyond a change in CPI occur. I mean, I, I, it just gives us more flexibility if we don't tie our hands to some objective standard, I think.
Can we just write into the provision that we'll review it on a regular basis to see if it needs to be updated?
I think we would have to define what regular is, right?
I mean, I think that's sort of understood in all of our ordinances, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, we're always evaluating to see what needs to be changed.
I don't know what makes sense, I just feel like I'm going back and forth around what the threshold should be and what makes sense. And while I see and I appreciate the township manager giving us a good survey of our surrounding municipalities, understanding when they passed it and what costs and construction costs look like now, it's hard to, it's hard to make a determination of what would make the most sense. However, I know that this is for us to consider advertisement and so what the amount that we kind of either identify tonight or if we tie it to a CPI, that would be what's advertised.
Right.
The amount can always be amended, correct?
Correct.
If this was, you know, passed and approved at 250 and it proved to be unworkable, either this year or next, you know, once it goes into effect, we could always increase or decrease. Tessie's point, if we find that, you know, we think we can go, given the, the contracts that we're bidding out, it makes sense to go lower, but I think.
Starting at a good.
It may also make sense to go higher given, given inflation, but 250 to me, just given the numbers that we've seen in surrounding municipalities seems about big enough.
So our most comparably sized municipalities are at 250. Boroughs are at a lesser amount. Bigger boroughs and bigger townships are at 350. So given the date of when those were enacted, I feel us being at 250 made sense. And we have the ability to review and amend.
But in post-advertising, in theory, we'll get, we'll, we'll get comments from the people that this affects, the experts who know more about this than we do, so.
That would be the hope.
Yeah, so I think we, we should just rely on the experts, I think, as opposed to maybe guessing might make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the whole point of advertising theoretically.
Theoretically.
So do you want us just leave it at 250,000 without some kind of peg to inflation?
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Come up, sir. You have to come on up. Well, maybe you can stop by Mimi, you can stop by Mimi, you can stop by Mimi.
Just a quick question, not having seen the ordinance, does this in any way describe employee wage structures or anti-discrimination hiring structures or anything like that in a quote responsible contractor? Or provisions in that area, just a curiosity.
Well, two things. First, I believe that the board packet is online, so you can always review it at your leisure prior to our meetings. I'm going to let our solicitor answer the question.
The answer is not directly, but the idea is that those who become responsible bidders under the ordinance are likely paying a higher wage than those that are not.
Not necessarily quote prevailing wage, but higher wage.
Correct.
Which is, I know, a trigger term.
Correct.
But any contract that would be in this amount would be required by state law, that those contractors have to pay prevailing wage.
Those are the key trigger. Okay, so I would like to make a motion, authorize the advertisement, the responsible contractor ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
With the change.
Oh, with the, I'm sorry, yes. With the changes that we discussed tonight and outlined to our solicitor, would like to, do I have to specify with the changes?
No, they're on the record.
Okay, thank you. Authorize the advertisement of the responsible contractor ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, do we need to just, do we need to identify when the hearing would be?
Uh, I don't know if we have a date at this point. Okay.
Okay.
February 27th.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you so much. Back to something that I was talking about earlier. We have a consideration of proposal to market Ingersoll House for sale, included in a memo, included as a memo from our project manager, John Correll, around the recommendation act, the recommended action. It is to authorize the township manager to sign an agreement with Lee Barry of Keller Williams Real Estate for the historic real estate marketing services of Ingersoll State. Included are the different proposals that were, you know, provided to us. And it goes over what is included in each proposal, that memo was included in our board packet. And I know that it was brought up when we were talking about our capital projects, I think at the end of last year. So this is regarding Ingersoll House and putting it up for sale. The full proposals from each of the realtors was, were included. Township staff spoke with a third realtor who chose not to submit. The recommendation is for us to enter an agreement with Lee Barry. Are there any questions from the board?
I, I don't have a question, but I, I really appreciate that bid and the, you know, the write-up that was supplied as part of the proposal, so I'm, I'm happy that you're recommending that one.
Additional questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? I'd like to make a motion to authorize our township manager to sign the agreement with Lee Barry of Keller Williams Real Estate for historic real estate marketing services for the Ingersoll House as revised to the satisfaction of the township solicitor. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. You guys are whispering down there, I can't really hear you. But thank you. Next up is a request to authorize the township manager to sign a contract extension with James D. Morrissey Incorporated for construction of the Spring House roadway improvement project phase two. I'm going to turn it over to our assistant township manager, who I believe is updating, are you, is it you? I'm sorry. No, Chad? Chad, oh, come on up, Chad. Give us an update, Chad, on the phase two.
All right, good evening. What we're requesting this evening is to extend the contract of James D. Morrissey for the Spring House intersection project. As the board is aware, the utility relocations that are necessary for the construction activity to get underway has been delayed and, and delayed significantly. In the memo in your board packet, we did provide an update on the status of the utility relocation work. We, we feel like it's getting close to being done. We've, our office and James D. Morrissey has been having constant communication with Verizon on getting their work wrapped up, their, the remaining utility that needs to relocate lines before the existing poles can then be removed and JDM can get started with their construction activity. Currently Verizon is estimating that the work they need to do will take approximately until the end of February along both Summietown Pike and Norristown Road. We requested in the project status meeting, which Verizon participated in last week, that they prioritize the poles along Summietown Pike. There's only one line hanging on the poles right now. We've asked them to prioritize that work and get it done as soon as possible, so JDM can at least get mobilized and get started on the Summietown Pike work while they continue the more complicated splicing and relocation work along Norristown Road. So the extension that JDM is requesting takes into account the number of days the project's been delayed due to the utility relocation work. We've also built in a little bit of extra time just to take into account any inclement weather during January and February. The current contract expires on February 11th. We're requesting an extension to August 28th. As we state in the memo, we have stressed the importance that this work be wrapped up by the end of summer, which is the August 28th date for the extension, and ideally the work be wrapped up before school starts shortly before then. JDM's estimate is, is that they think they can get the work wrapped up by the end of July and meet that extension time. So we're requesting that Mimi be given authorization to, to sign the contract extension to move the project forward.
So JD Morrissey believes, and so that's why you're giving us an anticipated project construction end date of July 31st versus the contract end date of August 28th?
Correct. The, the, the extra month will just give us some time to, to wrap up any final punch list items at that time, but they're estimating that, that the bulk of the work will be completed by the end of July and, and just August will be needed to wrap up punch list items.
The removal of the utility poles on Summietown, I think you said, that's to happen in February?
Yes, that's what we're requesting. Again, Verizon anticipates that they'll be able to have all of their utility relocation work done by the end of February, but we've asked them to prioritize the Summietown Pike work to get done sooner. They haven't given us an exact date for the Summietown Pike poles. Mimi and I are going to be coordinating on pressuring them into giving us a date as soon as possible.
So as soon as we have that date, we can kind of broadcast it out so that people are aware to kind of maybe avoid that intersection if possible?
Yeah, yeah, once, once the lines are relocated to the new poles, then PICO and Verizon has to come in and remove the old poles. James D. Morrissey's not permitted to do that, the utility companies have to do that, but we've stressed both to Morrissey and the utility companies that we need as much advance notice as possible so we can alert the township residents to try and find alternative routes when those poles are being removed if they like.
I'm assuming that time is of the essence, provisions are not really acceptable in these types of contracts.
Any additional questions from the board? Questions from the public?
When are you, when are you moving? Inside your house?
I think.
End of summer. End of August.
2024.
25.
No, 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 I'm done.
Done, done.
Done.
Done, 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 done. It was supposed to be done, done already. Thank you, Chad. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize Mimi to enter into the contract extension.
Before we vote, can I just?
Absolutely, go ahead.
We really don't have a choice, right?
Not really.
Just checking that this is a vote that we have to make anyway, it's, okay, I figured that.
All we can do is have Chad stress how important it is.
So I'd like to make a motion, authorize township manager to sign a contract extension with JD Morrissey for construction in the Spring House roadway improvement project phase two, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Are you guys voting? You guys have to talk real loud. Aye, you guys have to talk real loud. Sorry, okay, consideration um of a stipulation to settle the tax assessment appeal for one thousand Radcliffe Lane. Um this is brought to us by the. Was it in school board, are there any questions from the board?
I have to abstain from considerations, my firm represents the school district.
Thank you, sir, are there any questions from the public? Do you have anything to add about this, Neil?
I do not.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion um for us. To approve the stipulation to settle the tax assessment appeal for one thousand Radcliffe Lane, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, there we go. Motion carries, next up is the consideration of stipulation to settle for tax assessment appeal for two oh eight Cathcart Road, are there any questions from the board?
Same refusal from me.
Any any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the stipulation to settle for tax assessment appeal for two oh eight Cathcart Road. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there we go. Motion carries, next up is a review of the Township Engineers Report that was included in our board packet. It outlines the work performed last period and what's to be performed this period. I want to thank the Township Engineer for providing such detailed report, are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I have a question. Chad, if I read it correctly.
No, this is the engineer, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Wait, okay. No questions for Jim.
There we go, thank you, Jim. Next up is the review of the Traffic Engineers Report, I want to thank the Traffic Engineer for such a detailed report, are there any questions from the board for the Traffic Engineer?
Yes.
There we go.
So I was looking at uh at your schedule, it looks like that um we cannot uh address a problem with the brake retardance between two oh two and um Bethlehem Pike. Is that correct?
Sorry, you should have just stayed up.
Um are you talking about the the anticipated date to adopt the ordinance or that there weren't there there were certain segments that didn't qualify? Is that your question?
The 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 section that didn't qualify, I think, is the one that causes my neighborhood the most disruption.
Yeah, there there's certain um criteria in the PA Vehicle Code. That have to be satisfied in order for one of these um restrictions. Um to be permitted to be put in place, um they have to be adopted into the township. Um code, they're up to be enforced by the township, but um the criteria that have to be established um are in the PA Vehicle Code. Um there's a list of five or six criteria that have to be satisfied, they all have to be satisfied. Um in order to um. Implement the restriction and unfortunately the section between two oh two and Bethlehem Pike um did not meet all the criteria.
Oh, so I think. Do you you have Sweetsford Road and Bethlehem Pike?
Just road into two oh two.
Yeah, Sweetsford Road and Bethlehem Pike, is that just like a typo, because I was wondering where they intersected, I I'm guessing you're talking about Summietown and ours, like, are you talking about Summietown?
Yeah, on some.
No.
On Summietown between two oh two and Sweetsford qualifies, but between two oh two and Bethlehem Pike.
Does not.
Yeah, the first bullet says between Sweetsford Road and Bethlehem.
Yeah, that was the section that we studied, we studied all the way from Sweetsford to Bethlehem, but only the section from Sweetsford to two oh two meets the criteria.
The only one.
So what what is the um? Criteria that that's lacking on the rest of the road?
There's criteria, the the one that it does not meet um. For that section between two oh two and Bethlehem Pike has to do with roadway grades. Um the the roadway grades cannot exceed more than four percent. In any segment of the roadway and there's a couple of segments um of Summietown Pike. Um that exceed a four percent grade, uh one is between um two oh two and Evans Road and the other is.
What? There's no hills there, it's pretty low.
That's why there's a traffic light there.
Yeah, and then the other, the other location is just to. The east of the Gwinnett Marcy uh campus um near the Chwell and Creek Crossing.
Yeah, I'm not so much worried about that, but so. Boy, there's no appeal, I guess, because we we cannot change the grade of the road, unfortunately.
Correct.
All right, well, that's unfortunate. This has dragged on for quite a few years to reach this point and and a disappointing answer, but um I appreciate your sticking with this till the bidder in.
I I will point out that Pendot also um conducted their own study of two oh two throughout Lower Gwinnett Township. Um and the entire segment of two oh two within Lower Gwinnett does meet the criteria. Um so whenever the township moves forward with adopting an ordinance. It'll not only include this small segment of Summietown Pike, but also two oh two.
The the whole distance of two oh two.
Within Lower Gwinnett.
So that hill going down to the to the bridge, that's not four percent?
We didn't do the study, um Pendot did, um if you want me to get clarification on why I'm not past the criteria, I can do that.
Uh no, I just go with it, uh that doesn't make sense to me, but uh. If we can get some relief from that terrible noise on two oh two, that will be a great uh a great plus. Thank you.
Any additional? Questions for the Traffic Engineer? Thank you so much, Chad. Next up is a review of our financial balance sheets and a year to date report for December two thousand and twenty three. Linda has included. Uh a very detailed. Financial packet. Cash and fund balance, are there any questions? And all comments? I just want to thank Melinda for all of the extra things that she puts in there to help us understand her accounting, we greatly appreciate it.
We do.
We do.
Um next up is the approval of our invoices, I have has the board have had an opportunity to review? Any questions or comments on the invoices? Like to make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries, next up is the approval of the minutes from our January second two thousand and twenty four meeting, as uh the entire board had a chance to review the minutes, any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve, is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries, um the supervisor liaison re reports were included in our board packet, are there any questions around? Um the Volunteer Commission meeting minutes? Or highlights, the meeting highlights? Seeing none, staff updates? Any staff have any updates?
I just have one small one, um just that we are in the process of um finalizing um the electronic recycling and shred day, which is going, it's looking like May eleventh is going to be the day. Um Saturday, May eleventh from eight till, we're going to do eight till eleven this year.
Thank you. That'll be presumably here at the township building? Thank you so much. Any other staff updates? Fred, do you want to say anything about Montgomery Township? No? I'm just I'm joking, I'm joking.
We'll have one thing to to give actual credit to Lower Gwinnett's Public Works Department, they had a long week last week. Um and did a nice job cleaning the roads, and I will say especially for Tuesday, that ice is the worst and.
I also want to thank you, thank you and all the public works, uh a couple of neighbors came up to me and said how impressed they were that our. Our street and a couple of other streets were plowed multiple times throughout the day, so greatly appreciated it. Uh next up is supervisor comments, Tessie?
Oh, um well, I'd like to congratulate our um our new police officer and also um Sergeant Henry. Uh for his promotion, um I'd like to thank all the police who were responsible for the commendation work. Um and um what else? I would like to thank Fred and the uh Public Works Department uh for getting my circle plowed in a timely fashion. And uh lastly, I'd like to thank the EAC for the big effort uh to uh, you know, go through the whole process of coming up with the green awards and. Taking applications, interviewing all those people, and it was a a large commitment of time and it was very. Uh they did a very conscientious job of um interviewing and selecting and uh congratulations to the winners of those awards. And that's all.
Thank you, Jimmy?
Uh I'd just like to pretty much echo everything that Tessie said, she very well said, um. Still all my thunder and uh but I also like to thank just the stat, it just. Being up here, it's I'm still new, but I'm just amazed with what everyone does, it's just amazing, you guys are great.
Janine?
Uh yeah, I'll echo what Tessie and Jimmy said, thank you, or congratulations to everybody. Supervisor Torsky and I were just commenting on how um. It's nights like these that really make us grateful for being up here and being able to do what we do and support our police and support our committees and, you know, all the good work that's going on in the community, it's. Very heartwarming and and wonderful to see. Uh on the same token, I want to congratulate um our chair. Danielle Duckett and the chief for the receiving an MLK award from Bethlehem Baptist Church, congratulations for all of your good work and service in the community. That's all for me, you're welcome for that.
When it snows, I get happy because it's a snow day for me, I don't have to go into the office, I can work from home. Public Works, the police and the fire, the fire um department never get to work from home. So honestly, I can't thank them enough, they keep us safe and they keep us alive, so thank y'all.
I'd echo what everyone uh said tonight, I especially want to congratulate Officer Rasmann, Sergeant Henry. Um and and the the great works that were, I I guess, commended tonight from Dobson, Henry and Everts and and their. I guess squad too, a couple of people weren't here, um hearing those stories, I think, were very heartwarming and very proud to have them represent us. And and to be out doing the work that they're doing, um thank you to all the Public Works guys and and our fire and and our police for all that you do. It doesn't go unnoticed because you'd never, as Torsky says, you don't ever get a day off, so we appreciate it tremendously, like to make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting has adjourned.
That's pretty good.
How much we had, that was pretty good. Said that was very, very well.